Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes each and every one of you to our city council meeting this evening. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located on the podium and there's in the back behind, if you will go through the door, you'll notice there's some blue cards there. And if you do fill them out, if you write the item that you're interested in speaking with, hand it to the city clerk and she'll pass it up to us here. We ask when you do speak that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and if you can't, avoid repetition. But once again, thank you for being here this evening with us. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
We are in compliance.
Great. Tonight, our invocation we give, given by Pastor Dr. Matt Butler of the Grace Point Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Dazne Puga, Rancho High School senior. Please come forward.
Let's bow our heads and pray together. Heavenly Father, we want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for your numerous blessings. Thank you for the life that you give us each day. In Scripture, you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern this great city. I ask that you would grant them discernment, help them to discern the needs of the people, grant them confidence in what is good and fitting, and also the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. God, I pray for the agenda set before them today. We ask for a great measure of wisdom, discernment, and grace today and the days ahead. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of North Las Vegas. God, please bless our time together. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Matt. I will tell you, we are so fortunate to have your wonderful organization and the things that you do for our city. We recognize what a great, great relationship we have with your Grace Point Church, and we look forward to continuing that. But please send that back to your members of your congregation, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a time set aside for public comment on posted agenda items. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Do I have any at this time?
Mr. Mayor, we have no cards.
Great. We will move on then. Thank you very much. We have some presentations here tonight. Our first one is a presentation and recognize the winners of the Winter Art Festival. Councilman Barone.
Cool. I guess we'll go down in front to hand these out.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, my colleagues on the city council, and I want to thank everyone who's down here. I'm really excited, of course, to be able to give out these awards. Quite frankly, the city of North Las Vegas, to our knowledge, has never had an art show, much less something that we can present awards to. This is our very first time. I know maybe we had a few things that didn't go exactly the way we wanted to, but we promised that in the coming shows and the coming years, there's something we'll all look back upon and I think we'll be proud. And I'm hoping that the people who are awarded today and everyone who participated will also look back and say, you know what? I was part of the very first bit of the art program for the city of North Las Vegas. And I thank everyone from the bottom of my heart who participated. I want to go ahead and get started with these awards. The, I want to start with the student awards. If you would hold your applause until, I guess, until we're done, and then we'll take a couple photos and then move on to the next group. The third place, student submission goes, Award of Excellence goes to, oh, no, there's the Student Submission Award of Excellence. I'll take that back. We'll just, I'll just go ahead and do this one. Ms. Daisy Diaz. Is Ms. Daisy Diaz in the audience? She's not? Okay, well, she got her Award of Excellence for hers. I think it was Untitled. So. Okay, so I guess a little bit out of order, but that's okay. Award of Excellence, this will be in the open, goes to Amanda Wisnewski for walking along the tracks. Please come on up. And, you know, I guess we can clap. That's a good idea. Congratulations. And I think hers is, it's that way, you know, I'm very, you know what? You know, I did not ask to come up. I'm so sorry. I should have asked her to come up. Our Stone Soup Art Center curator, Ms. Kennedy, who happens to be one of my colleagues at Rancho High School. Yeah, thank you so very much. By the way, do we have any board members from the North Las Vegas Arts Board here? Don't have any board members? That's okay. We'll just go ahead and go on. Well, he's doing that again, you know? I'm really happy that our staff with Ms. Kennedy took the time to go ahead and bring the artwork that's been out here for the last couple of weeks. And I want to really thank all of our artists for allowing us to have it down here. This is the People's Choice Award. We had a chance to have people vote on it, and the people chose Nita for Ellen's Dragon. Nita is, of course, one of our members for our center here on Brew Street, and I met her last year, and I was totally floored by her talent. Congratulations. Plus, she's a Rancho alumni. And, yeah, she's going to share with Ellen. The reason why it's called Ellen's Dragon is because she's in it. Ellen, I mean. This is the Councilman's Choice Award. This is the one, I had a soft spot, but there's so many that I really liked. There was one done by Ms. Wisnewski that I was calling, I was actually calling Nancy because it looks like our assistant there on the ninth floor. It was the one, the, she actually calls it Day of the Dead, but everyone says that it looks like Nancy. And so I was going to award that one, but this one really caught my heart because it's something that, it looks like the cover of a book that I like to read to my grandkids. This one goes to Jorge Betancourt Polanco, The Dream Collection. Okay, now at this time, what we'll do is now I'll call the first, second, and third place winners, so I know time is a little bit at the essence. Let's go ahead and do the adults. We'll do the adults first then. Okay, third place, this is one of my favorite ones, was Remundo Lovano for Red Boat. I think Remundo was also one of our, you're also one of our members for our art, for the Neighborhood Recreation Center, right? Fantastic. Thank you. Here's yours. Yeah, let's have all three of them come up. Second place is Mr. Victor Reyes for Many Faces. And then, dun, da, da, dun. First place goes to Mr. Steve Anthony for Pity Kitty. I guess Pretty Kitty. Is he here? I guess he is here. Congratulations and handshake. Of course, I think one of my favorite ones, it was one of the smallest ones, there's one called Bubbles, which was amazing. Yeah, participations. Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and call out the people who participated. If you'll please just hold your applause and we'll have people come up. Participation, Bernard Paul Brown. Is he in the audience, Bernard? Come on up, please. And then Marlon, Marlon, is it Boyasos? Marlon? Okay, he must not be here. And then Natalie Beck, Ms. Beck? Natalie Beck? She's not here? Okay. We had lots of entries here. Marilyn Bilstein? Marilyn Bilstein? Ah, fantastic. Thank you, Doctor. Giselle Satterain? Oh, Lutterain? Giselle? Is she here? Giselle's not here. Yeah, please, yeah, just for a minute. Ronit Aroni? Ronit, yeah, there we go. She did this one great wailing wall. It was fantastic. Barbara Schonmakers? Is Barbara here? There she is. Ida Spurlin? Ida? Not here. Juan Varela? Juan Varela? He's here. You had the jazz musicians, right? The jazz musicians were yours? Los músicos? Ah, sí, sí, sí. Yeah. Maxine Delisle? Maxine? Oh, she's here. And Rosa Culba? Rosa? Is Rosa here? Oh, there she is. I think Rosa still has one of my signs from when I was campaigning a couple of years ago. I tell her I'm going to come and pick it up, but of course, I never have. Congratulations, Rosa. Jasmine Vasquez? Jasmine? Is Jasmine here? No Jasmine? Okay, just a couple more. Kathy Worley? Kathy Worley? Not here. Jean Manley? Jean Manley? No? I guess that's it. Well, hey, congratulations to all, and you're our first participants. Thank you so very much for participating, and of course, next year, we're going to have even more participants. Thank you. So happy to see you. Thank you so very much. Thank you so much. Okay, finally. I'm sorry, yeah, one more. These are the last three. Okay, the last three here. This is the student division. In third place, we have Teresita Briseño for Alone. Is Teresita here? Oh, that's too bad. She even, you know what? She even colored her hair just for this, and I'm so sorry. She's one of my students over at Rancho High School. I know her very well. I didn't tell her that she was winning, of course. Heather Vasquez for Missile Shoe, I think it is. Is Heather here? Hey, and I missed, I thought she had just misspelled it because I, correcting student work all the time, so I thought she had misspelled it, but it's actually Missile Shoe, not Missile Toe, like I thought. I'm going to get that fixed. And first place goes to our reader for today's, for today's Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Daisy Puga. I know it took a long time, but thank you so very much. Yes.
I'd like to call up Robert, which I know him as Bob, and Sandra, and I know her as Sandy Ellis. Would you two come up, please? And I am extremely honored to present this proclamation to the two of you, and just for the records, the school that they support just happens to be the school that I work at. So, they didn't know that at the time, so I just want to put that out there. But I am just so appreciative that you adopted Lomi Gray-Herd Elementary School on Nellis Air Force Base and all that you do for those military babies on a daily basis. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. And also, I know you do a lot for Rancho High School as well. So, we appreciate that. Rancho High School alum. Okay, so I'm just going to read this to you real quickly. So, it says, "Whereas it is the policy and pleasure of the city of North Las Vegas to recognize special individuals in the community such as Robert and Sandra Ellis. Bob and Sandy Ellis have worked side by side to build their auto auction and towing business over 43 years and have earned a reputation for integrity and indomitable work ethic in that industry. Bob and Sandy were among the first to recognize an urgent need at Whitney Elementary School, which they adopted nearly 10 years ago. They provide hundreds of thousands of dollars for food and clothing for students at that school, many of whom are homeless. Bob and Sandy selected four other at-risk elementary schools: Robert Taylor, C.T. Sewell &amp; Henderson, Lomi Herd on Nellis Air Force Base, and Ronaldo Martinez, all in North Las Vegas." Well, not all in North Las Vegas, but in North Las Vegas. "This year, we will mark the 10th consecutive year Bob and Sandy will provide Christmas for every student in the target schools and four Lincoln County schools. Bob and Sandy and their friends, including Mayor Lee, have raised more than $10,000 in each of the past two years to support the Lomi Herd Accelerated Reading Program. Bob and Sandy have also donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to support Henderson Library District Initiatives, the Basic High School Autism Program, Nevada Partners for Homeless Youth, UNLV Athletics, Rancho High School Homeless Students Program, the Boy Scouts of America and College of Southern Nevada. Bob and Sandy have also recognized, have been recognized by the Henderson Chamber of Commerce with the first ever Spirit of Henderson Award, Nevada Newsmakers Outreach Lifetime Achievement Award, and by the Clark County School District Board of Trustees for their timely and impactful support of elementary schools in the country. So, now for we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do hereby proclaim today, February 4th, as Bob and Sandy Ellis Day in North Las Vegas, and urge all citizens to join us in congratulating them."
Well, this is quite an honor. But it's not me and Sandy that are the heroes, it's the teachers. I mean, we've got two teachers right here. We're proud to be able to afford to help these schools, but the teachers and the principals, the volunteers, the staff, they see, they see the problems of these kids every day. And if it wasn't for the folks being involved and the grand folks and volunteering to help these kids, these kids wouldn't have a chance. And I learned by, from Senator Patricia Spearmant, that if kids don't learn to read or write by the third grade, is how they come up with how many kids are going to be in juvenile hall, in jail, and then in prison. So, it starts here, and this is a great town. I mean, you guys got a beautiful, beautiful, great council, a great mayor and all that stuff, and you guys ought to be proud. You've got Mitch Fox here now helping. So, you guys, you ought to be proud of your city, which I think you are. It's not the old North Las Vegas that I knew. This is a, this is a, this is a great tribute to the city council and the mayor. And thank you. Maybe can I turn this into Jerry's Nuggets and just Bobby Ellis and Sandy and get a free prime rib dinner tonight? Thank you.
I guess I'd start off with the council. You know, I've been very fortunate in my life, Bobby. I also graduated Rancho in '73, and we were just the wonderful people that made up a great community. And I know, I don't exactly know where you live, but I knew the man that you were because we all were growing up with those kind of values. And when I look at you and I see what a benefactor you are to so many wonderful people, a lot of people ask you for support, but you keep your eyes open for places where people don't ask and they're struggling and they're trying, and you go, I can help those guys, you know? And you locate those. I recognize, Bobby, that you have worked your way, knowing your past through Paul Christiansen and our other dear friends, how you have worked yourself to the top. But I don't think people understand what the top really means to people like you and I. The top is when we get to a point and we have enough and we can have a good, healthy meal every night, we reach down and we help others up. You have, you dignify what the top is of the food chain, to be a man that recognizes his ability to help others and to make a commitment into the lives of many, many people. So, you are a wonderful human being, and we're so glad that you get involved in the governance of our communities and our state and also in the philanthropy. You are a tremendous American and a great Nevadan. Thank you very much.
Of course, I'll keep this brief. I have to mention, of course, he's doing pretty good for, not only for Rancho Grad, but he was our valedictorian, too. So, you know, again, I always give a plug for our Rancho alumni, definitely making their presence felt in the community. And in this case, you know, quite frankly, his, his help to our school really makes a big difference in life, especially for the homeless kids right here in the community. I think Rancho High School has the highest amount of homeless children in the valley and the high schools, right? But with people like Bobby Ellis on their side, they're going, they're going to make it. Thank you so much.
And again, I truly appreciate all you have done for our military, our military families because I service over 600 children whose parents deploy at any given minute at the drop of the dime. And so, knowing that someone is there to support them, your name is mentioned almost daily on the campus of Lomi Herd Elementary School, children remember, I have on my shoes, I have my toy, or I've reached another goal in the Accelerated Reader Program. And so, promoting literacy is extremely important, and I, second and third, what you said about having children ready to read by the third grade so that they can be successful for either college or career once they reach that age. So, again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Just one more thing. I was invited two or three years ago, me and my bride, my wife, here, 50 years, by the way. And, yeah, she, yeah, she needs the medal of valedictorian. But Senator Lee, at the time, got us a tour of Nellis Air Force Base, lived here 60-some years and never, have never done it. And I never realized to then that there was an elementary school at Nellis Air Force Base. It's the second oldest school in Clark County, and it's because of the mayor over there that we're involved because we'd have never known. So, I got to thank you and we, the colonels out there and the military, I love the military. I was never in it, but I take my hat off to anybody that's ever served, and they're just great people. They're down to earth, so thank you.
Well, I'll just add, you know, since I've been on the city council, there's not a month gone by that I haven't heard your name mentioned with something, you know, good, donations, helping, you know, ever since I've been on. So, I thank you. Thank you so much, you and your wife, for your generosity.
There is no doubt in my mind that you are a shining example of what all of us should be. You are a role model for everyone in this room and everyone in the city of North Las Vegas, and thank you so much for all that you do for us.
or go home, we'll give you a chance to get your material, okay? Thank you. We'll take a two-minute recess. We'll take a two-minute recess. We're going to go ahead and reconvene real quickly here. We have a wonderful opportunity to make a presentation to our library district. And Mayor Pro Tim, would you do this?
I would be more than happy to. I have been very blessed to serve for many, many years as chairman of the Friends of the North Las Vegas Library District. And when Mayor Lee came on board as our new mayor, he looked at me and he said, "We're going to start raising some money for the library. It has a lot of needs and we're going to really work on it." And he did exactly what he said he was going to do. And he has helped us raise, I believe, close to, if not over $100,000 for the library within the past three, four, five months, six months? Well, $120,000. Included in that was the mayor's wonderful State of the City address just a few weeks ago at the end of January. And everyone who purchased a ticket to come to that event, a small portion of the proceeds were put aside to go to a nonprofit organization. And the mayor selected the Friends of the North Las Vegas Library District to receive those funds. And so Forrest Lewis is our executive director for the City of North Las Vegas Library District. And on behalf of the North Las Vegas City Council, these are the funds presented to you and the library district from the State of the City. Thank you so much.
Counsel, who'd have thought we'd had so much culture in our community and so much interest in our libraries? We are definitely on the way back. We have great people participating in our community. And we've got a great city staff that's working forward to bring these resources back to full order. I thank you very much also. Madam City Clerk, do you want to please begin with the agenda?
Yes, approval of the regular city council meeting agenda February 4, 2015, for possible action.
Good evening, Madam Counsel. We have one change to tonight's agenda. Staff has recommended item number three on the public hearing to be withdrawn without prejudice. With that change, the recommendation is for approval as amended.
Great, Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, on the approval of this item, I'll take a motion as amended?
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote.
The next item is set future public hearing dates. Set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the City Planning Commission meetings.
Madam City Clerk, I shall direct you to set any appropriate dates.
So noted, Mayor, thank you. Under public hearings, item number four, VAC 0914, Goldfield 2, an application submitted by William Lyon Homes, Inc., property owner, to vacate a portion of right-of-way next to Lone Mountain Road on property generally located approximately 380 feet west of North Fifth Street and north of Lone Mountain Road extending west approximately 240 feet for possible action.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing on this item. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Rebecca Chiriboga, 6030 South Jones, representing the applicant. We actually agree with all of staff conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions. This was just a cleanup item on our project.
Great. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions on the approval of this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Next item under consent agenda. Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to accept. Move to approve. Please cast your vote.
First item under business, information technology. I apologize, we'll wait for... Under business, information technology purchase agreement with Data Specialties Incorporated and the total amount of $820,243, plus required taxes, shipping, and travel expenses for procurement of design, build, and purchase install equipment for the retrofit and expansion of the justice facility backup server room for possible action.
Great, thank you. It's very nice to have a presentation. Director Adair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We have the privilege of having Adam Cohen and Terry Fletcher here tonight. They are responsible for our IT functions, both the infrastructure and the applications. And tonight, we have a presentation by our project manager, Adam Cohen, who is presenting tonight on the IT infrastructure refresh and redundancy and relocation project that you're aware of that we started at the time that relocated the police building. So with that, I'll turn my time over to Adam for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you for letting me present tonight. First off, a quick recap of why we're doing this. The city is highly dependent upon technology, whether it's, excuse me, dispatchers checking in on safety of officers or people checking out books in the library. Applications are everywhere. And these applications, they run on computer servers and networking that require specialized server rooms to be placed in. You can't just place these servers underneath your desk like you can a PC, for example. And for many years, the city has had issues with our server rooms. They were never designed properly. They were failing, our network environment was failing. And we had to address the police department going away, which is where our main server room was. So for the current fiscal year, a $2.3 million CIP project was put together to address these longstanding issues. I came to council in May last year to overview Phase 1 of this project and seek approval. And that consisted of going to Via West to house our critical equipment, acquiring and integrating four-and-a-half miles of dark fiber so we can get from the city to Via West where our servers were going to be stored, acquiring Cisco network equipment to be able to get networking going to Via West, and also to move our core equipment to Via West. So at Via West, we developed a five-year agreement with them to house our equipment with the option to house it for up to 20 years. We set up a 500-square-foot cage, secure cage. And we also installed 12 cabinets, a cable ladder rack, and power distribution units. And this is a picture of our cage itself at Via West. Before you get to this point, there's a lot of security checkpoints that you need to go through. But you could see it's very secure. There's even a roof on the cage and the tiles are sealed down. There's a camera in there to record everybody going in and out of it. There's two-factor authentication, so you need to use like a thumbprint and a proxy card ID to be able to get into there. And we filled it with 12 cabinets so far. We can expand it to another eight cabinets as well. With Zayo, we oversaw the installation of two paths of dark fiber. So if an accident were to occur, on one path, we still have another means to get there, to get to our data. Public Works helped out. They spliced that fiber into our existing network. So thanks to Jeff Reals and Eric Judd for the work on that. And it took us a couple of weeks to figure this out. We had some complexity and we got that going. For our networking gear, our core network was over 15 years old, which is very ancient in computer terms. You can imagine having a 15-year-old PC that's on the fritz all the time. So we acquired Cisco gear from DynTech and Services. And we came in overnight a few times to reduce the disruption in the city business to put the network gear in to replace that. We turned on encryption between the city and Via West. So if you had a hacker or criminal trying to sneak in and sniff our network communications, they wouldn't comprehend it because it's all secure. And we also configured and installed ATAP rack switches. And to give you an idea what these look like, on the left-hand side is an example of one of our large core network switches that runs a lot of the city's communications on it. And on the right hand, you see a couple of our top rack switches that we put in place. And over Christmas, I put a picture of Santa Claus here, but probably the staff would go for the Grinch more because we worked the week of Christmas on this. We developed a project plan. It took us several weeks, if not months, to do that and do preparation. We contracted Dell move services. We had to use them because Dell equipment, when you move it, it needs to be certified by them. But they worked like clockwork. They did an excellent job in helping us move the equipment. We set up temporary servers because we're going to have a 72-hour outage and you can't have, like, no arresting people or booking people over 72 hours. So we spent a lot of time. So we didn't disrupt business as much as possible. And during the week, there was over 200 extra hours on top of our regular hours put in to move the equipment. And there was help from the police department IT, utilities IT, and support from municipal court as well. So everybody really came together that week to make it happen. And our thoughts on this, we were successful. We were on schedule. We were on budget, which is always a good thing. We have a very dedicated and hard-working team. I have to give them kudos all the time because they really made it happen. Our long-overdue network refresh that has been over our head for many years was done. Our core server and storage equipment's now in a proper server room environment, which means more stability for the city and all the systems that we depend upon. We have a couple of things to do, a couple more servers to move and to configure our backup servers. So now we're going to Phase 2, which is regarding the agenda item that's coming up. The core of this is to expand and retrofit the justice server, backup server room. Also, the police department will be seeking funding and approval to move their radio and 911 equipment into this room. We need to vault the fiber optics that go into the old police department station because it's critical infrastructure that we still need to use. And we need to acquire some more storage space as well. So with all these great things about Via West, why are we building this backup server room? Well, first of all, you need a stable point to be able to get to Via West. You can have the greatest thing on the other end, but if you don't have a reasonable starting point to get there, we'll be in trouble. We also need a safe place for backups. With IT, it's a lot about redundancy, having backups, making sure you're safe and being able to have an environment to bring up emergency systems. So that's a core function of this room. But we're also going to keep some core systems. This is the primary server room for some core things, like our telephone systems, a lot of our network connections that we spent many years putting in there. Our police 911 system needs to be by the dispatchers. And we have radio systems that the police use quite a bit and other entities. That's critical and needs to be housed properly. So this room, it's kind of like the Goldilocks room. It's not too much, not too little. It's just sufficient for us to get through this. We're not rebuilding Via West or Switch or anything like that. It's just sufficient to get us going. The current room is 250 square foot, almost a closet over there. And we're going to rip out the wall and expand it into the adjacent room to bring it up to 750 square foot. It's designed for 10 years of growth, hopefully longer than that. And we're buying equipment. We're trying to be frugal with our spending. And we're just equipping it for five years of growth. And then over time, if we need to buy more cabinets or another air conditioner at a much lower cost in this whole project, we'll be able to expand that area. And I'm not going to go over this list, but it is a costly item, but there's a lot included. There's five air conditioners and the various delivery systems involved with that, electrical work, plugging into generator, UPS, design building, construction, you name it. And we spent a lot of time analyzing the design. We had third parties look at it. We got multiple competitive bids on the equipment to make sure that we're getting a good value for the money that we're asking to spend here. Current status, so we've been working on the design last year and we completed it, the conceptual design in November. We're asking for approval. There's a design, build, and equipment agreement with DSI for $820,243, plus travel and freight and taxes as well. If approved, we need to begin this as soon as possible so that we can vacate the Old South Area Command by July 1. And we're also, if approved, we're going to be asking for help from Public Works to expedite plans approval because this is going to be in a compressed timeline. Thank you.
Great, that was very informational. Interestingly, a year and a half ago, it was Hope and the chief. And I got together and was able to work with the hospital. And that started this whole complex thing of data and FBI and storage and all this kind of stuff. You guys have done fantastic. I would like to make one thing. I'm not interested in July 1 because from that point forth, we have to pay rent on that building. We're hoping you can get out. Can I commit you to June 1 or something?
June 12 is what we've compressed it to right now. And we're meeting constantly with the police department, the D.R. Best. We're going to give it all, our whole effort just as we've given our efforts for everything else.
Thank you. And I know they're working diligently beside you, but at the end of the day, it's really you that make it happen, so...
It's a group. It's a team. No I and team.
All right, thank you. Director?
Mayor, one of the things I wanted to point out here on this that I'm really excited about what's been accomplished by the team so far and what they've got ahead of them is this is literally the foundation of everything that you have in the IT and software and hardware, all the things that you interact and the employees interact with on a daily basis. And it's, you know, any solution's only as good as its weakest link. And oftentimes, the infrastructure is where people tend to, because they're such large dollar items and because they require such significant planning and pulling things together, it tends to be the place where you cut the corners. And those corners end up paying later when something isn't able to stay up. If it goes down or has some kind of failure, you have to take it offline in order to improve the facilities where they're at. We've done extensive time trying to make sure that this plan was going to provide a very firm foundation for the future upgrades that we want to do and enhancements to the software, the additional implementation of VDI's and so forth. So this is very important. We are very focused on trying to make it out by June 30. But one of the things I want to emphasize is that this is the foundation under which the rest of the systems and delivery methods that this city survives on. So I've encouraged Adam and his team to push as hard as they possibly could, but as well to remind them that what we don't want is cracks in that foundation as well. We want it nice and pretty and solid and firm. And very pleased with what they did at the end of the year in moving into Via West and excited for what they're going to hear. And I think you'll be pleased that you just won't hear as many outages and issues like that that you've experienced in the past.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, we appreciate that presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Thank you, Adam. You did a very fine job.
Mayor, I just wanted to say one thing. I suspect that Adam already knows that he'll have it done by probably like May, but he's telling you that they won't have it done. So you can have like a Star Trek moment, you know? And he can say, "Captain, don't have the power." And of course, he'll actually get it done beforehand and then we'll think he's a miracle worker.
I love it. I just want to make sure the police department has enough time after you get out to continue moving their stuff out. So that'll be great. Item number 11.
Receive the annual audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, for possible action.
Director Adair, once again, thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, this is an exciting thing for me because this is the culmination of a year's worth of work with the team that I work with in the accounting and finance department. A couple of them are here tonight, or they were. Or they might be watching, actually working in their offices and watching the proceedings online. And to that, I want them to know how much we greatly appreciate that. But we've worked, every year, we work very closely with Piercy Bowler, Taylor Kearns, they're independent CPAs. They've had a longstanding relationship with the city and have done an excellent job. They handle a lot of municipalities in the valley and are respected for their expertise and experience in that area. And we're grateful to continue to have that relationship. Standing with me here tonight and reporting on behalf of Piercy Bowler, Taylor Kearns, is Cade Stratton. He is the principal and engagement partner on this account and has been working with the city account for, I think, approximately three years. We're very pleased to have him working with us and especially appreciate the patience that he and his staff have shown to the city and to our team, particularly as we've worked through with a little less than the normal amount of resources here. So with that, I'd like to turn over the... So with that, I'd like to turn over the microphone to Cade and allow him to tell you a little bit about the reports. We'll try and keep it as concise as possible.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. First, I want to apologize for my voice. Trying to get over a bug right now. Name's Cade Stratton, audit principal, Piercy Bowler, Taylor Kearns, like Darren said. Here to report to you that we are substantially complete with the audit and are ready to issue our reports thereon. And our reports will contain an unqualified opinion, which is the good opinion that you strive to reach for every year. Just want to take a moment to thank Darren and his staff. When an audit firm comes in to do an audit each year, it's generally a great disruption on their everyday lives. We come in, we demand a lot of documents, a lot of information. And Darren's staff, being as thin as they are, they put in countless hours to be able to get us the information that we needed to be able to complete our audit and issue unqualified reports. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize them and thank them for that effort. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing then, there usually never is at this high level of accounting that we don't understand. But I'll ask you a question. So when we accept this annual report, is this something that we move on to the state and it's from their view to gain, or what happens to the report?
Mayor, when you accept this, I'm a little unclear about the use of the word "accept." Obviously, it's an independent report and there's not really an option to not accept it. That's one of the beauties of the independence that they have. But again, it's a great report and we're pleased with the outcomes of it. Where we go from here is, they will put the ink on the reports now that we've made the presentation to the council in the traditional manner. And then within the week, we post this onto our website and make it available for all those interested parties and citizens who are interested in looking at the results of the last year. We also have a couple of opportunities in the upcoming weeks to present to the financial community and to the Department of Taxation and other interested bodies with respect to the results for that year ended. So just briefly, I know that there was a lot of focus put on fund balance, where fund balance would end up. I mean, last year was a very busy year with all the stones that we turned over trying to understand where we'd be as a city financially and trying to predict and project where that would be and what the key factors would be. We came before this council and asked for you to consider for a one-year period of time, reducing the minimum fund balance at the end of the year from 8%, as you recall, down to 6% in a mutual effort to try and reach an agreement with our collective bargaining groups. Very pleased that that was resolved and very grateful that the council was willing to accommodate that during that period of time. The ending fund balance for the general fund for the year ended June 30, 2014, was about $8.1 million or about 7.2%. So not to the bottom of the range and not certainly above the range. Obviously, the results being in that area was a result of a lot of hard work across the city in trimming and pruning the costs in their departments. And so we're grateful for their efforts, but wanted to let you know that that wasn't a decision that was wasted on your part, and we're committed to continue to work to get that back.
Thank you very much. I used to fear these things, and I look forward to them. It lets me know that we're moving in the right direction and we have all the facts out and everybody understands what they are. Thank you, Mr. Stratton, for being here today. Counsel, any other comments or questions on this item? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the annual audit report.
Move to accept the report.
Please cast your vote.
Mayor and counsel, items number 12 through 14 are associated, so I would like to read them together, please. Interlocal agreement and authorization for shared funding with the County of Clark and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder City, of the regional homeless coordination and inclement weather shelter, in the amount of $65,643.49 to be allocated from the general fund for the regional homeless activities, associated items number 13, interlocal agreement for homeless management information system, number 14, interlocal agreement for the homeless census and evaluation. This was for possible action. Item number 13, interlocal agreement and authorization for shared funding with the County of Clark and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, of the homeless management information system in the amount of $24,194.36 to be allocated from the general fund for the homeless management information system, associated items number 12, interlocal agreement with regional homeless activities, number 14, interlocal agreement for the homeless census and evaluation for possible action. Excuse me. And item number 14, interlocal agreement and authorization for shared funding with the County of Clark and the cities of Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, of the homeless census and evaluation in the amount of $2,513.39 to be allocated from the general fund for the homeless census and evaluation, associated items number 12, interlocal agreement for regional homeless activities, number 13, interlocal agreement for homeless management information system for possible action.
Mayor and counsel, I would like to read one change into the record. The shared funding is only for the inclement weather shelter. It does not include the regional homeless coordination. Staff's recommendations for approval as amended.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments or questions on item number 12? Mayor Pro Tem?
Just that, you know, the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition works with these items because they are something that the county and each of the cities needs to play a role in. And it is really the only system that we have right now in dealing with the homeless issue at all. And I can tell you that the inclement weather shelters, when it is 120 degrees outside in the summer and you don't have a place to go during the day, it's pretty tough on our, on our streets, whether you're in Henderson, North Las Vegas, or Las Vegas. So I really do support these items because the homeless are a fact and we need to help in whatever ways we can. So I would recommend approval of item number 12.
That's a motion as amended. Please cast your vote. Item number 13. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Item, pardon me. Item number 14. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Next item, item number 15. Allocation of fiscal year 2014-2015 home investment partnership grant funds in the amount of $95,291.32 to rebuilding together Southern Nevada for property retrofit rehabilitation of single-family owner occupied units and authorize the city manager or her designee to enter into appropriate agreements for approved programs and projects as required for possible action.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote.
Item number 16. Agreement to use local government contract with Salt Lake Wholesale Sports in an amount not to exceed $100,000 per fiscal year, using the competitive bidding exception per NRS 332 Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of various types of ammunition for the police department for possible action.
Counsel, any comments or questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Ordinance is introduction only. There is no public comment for these items and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Ordinance number 2699, an ordinance related to zoning, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately 5.049 plus minus acres therein from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to an R3 multifamily residential district, ZN 1514 Madison Palms Senior Apartments, for property located approximately 400 feet north of Ann Road and east of Farrell Street, 3150 West Ann Road, and providing for other matters property relating thereto, set final action for February 18, 2015. Ordinance number 2704, an ordinance of the City of North Las Vegas amending ordinance numbers 1747, 2602, 2683, amending title 5 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code, Business Licenses and Regulations, amending section 5.02.040 Annual and Semiannual Licenses, amending section 5.02.100, Schedule of Other License Fees and Businesses, Providing for the Issuance of Annual License Fees, and Providing for Other Matters Property Related thereto, set final action for February 18, 2015. Ordinance number 2705, an ordinance related to zoning, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the City of North Las Vegas Municipal Code by reclassifying approximately .52 plus minus acres therein from an RE Ranch Estates District to a CP Professional Office Commercial District, ZN 0115 Brigham Young Academy, for properly located at 4100 North Decatur Boulevard, and providing for other matters property relating thereto, set final action for February 18, 2015. Ordinance number 2706, an ordinance amending title 17 to the Municipal Code of the City of North Las Vegas, related to zoning, ZOA 0115, amending title 17, section 17.16.040A, table 17.16-1, Business Zone Districts, section 17.16.040E, Purpose Statements for Residential Districts, section 17.16.040J, Purpose Statement for Obsolete Districts, section 17.20.010, table 17.20-1, Permit Use Table, section 17.20.030CF, table 17.20-3, permitted accessory use table, section 17.20.030F7B39, Home Occupations, section 17.20.030F7B46, Offices as a Home Occupation, section 17.24.010A, table 17.24.010-1, Lot Area, Lot Width, Density Requirements for Residential Zone Districts, section 17.24.010A, table 17.24.010-2, Building Setback and Height Requirements for Residential Zone Districts, section 17.24.010C, table 17.24.010-5, Lot Area, Lot Width, and Density Requirements for the RA Zone Subdistricts, section 17.24.010E, table 17.24.010-9, permitted encroachments in residential districts and RA sub-districts, section 17.24.020C, table 17.24.020-2, Residential Open Space Requirements, section 17.24.020C3A, Minimum Dimensions, section 17.24.040C2, Parking Necessary to Residential Use, section 17.24.040C3, Setbacks, section 17.24.040C6A3, Garages Required for Single Family Dwelling, section 17.24.050E2H, Colossals and Dead End Streets Discouraged, section 17.24.050G, Perimeter Sidewalks, section 17.24.050I1D, Drainage and Utility Easement, section 17.24.060C1, Requirements for Individual Lots, section 17.24.060C3, Landscape Parkway Interior Streets, section 17.24.090C3 Standards, section 17.24.090D1A, Number of Models Required, section 17.24.090D1C, Garage Placement, and section 17.24.090D3F, Elevations and Trim, to amend the provisions and design standards regarding residential development, related standards for home occupations and providing for other matters related thereto, set final action for February 18, 2015.
We give up. We surrender. Greg, you shouldn't do that. That was horrible to her.
Mayor, that was the abbreviated version.
Thank you, Greg. Ordinance number, ordinance for final action, item number 21. Ordinance number 2701, an ordinance of the City of North Las Vegas, amending ordinance number 2354, which amended ordinance numbers 1429 and 2148, approving an amendment to the August 2, 2000 Development Agreement between the City of North Las Vegas and South Beach Willis LLC for the development of land and providing for other matters property relating thereto for possible action.
Hey, counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, I'll take a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, George Garcia, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive. Pleasure to be before you. Happy to answer any questions or explain anything if you have any questions.
There you go. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item?
Move to approve.
Please cast your vote. Thank you very much, George.
Thank you.
Item number 22, appointment. Ratification of an appointment of a member to the Veterans Community Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2017, for possible action.
Great. Counsel, this is ratification of appointment. Received a letter from the office of the governor appointing Mr. Robert Borja, and there is an attached letter. Counsel, do you have any questions on this? If not, I'll take a motion to ratify the appointment of Mr. Robert Borja.
Move to approve.
City manager, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, we have two items to report tonight. The first is a really update by Communications Director Mitch Fox regarding the State of
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to provide you an update on the State of the City luncheon that took place on January 27th. It was a big success. I just want to give you a brief update and play the video that was well-received by everyone there, that everyone that saw it. But before I get into my presentation, I would like to take time, if I may, just to thank the city staff that helped put this together. People don't recognize the fact that it's a massive event that takes months and months of planning, from the ticket-taking and the promotion and the setup and the testing of drones. I can go on down the line. It was a massive effort, and I would like to read their names if I could. Amanda Dillard, Chantel Pop, Nancy Chavez, Craig Sheeler, Joyce Wood, Donna Gamble, Elisa Bradshaw, and Pamela Ditmar. And they deserve really a clap for all they did. Okay, briefly, and I do mean briefly, these are statistics from prior State of the City events. As you can tell, starting in 2011, we had 514 attendees. 2012, we had 582. It gradually crept up each year. In 2013, we had 592 attendees. 2014, last year, 600 attendees. And then, I feel like we should have a drum roll, but thank you, councilwoman. 735 attendees for 2015. It was extremely well-attended. There were a lot of people that showed up that we didn't anticipate, and I think we actually ran out of seats, which is a good problem to have. So we're looking at expanding next year and perhaps putting down some tables and chairs and accommodating lots of people. Texas Station was great to work with, by the way. I might add that. On the next one, media coverage, something that I monitor, two stories, one of which was a column in the Review Journal, Las Vegas Sun, 8 News Now, Fox 5 News, 13 Action News, Amundale Fox, all covered the event. And I know the mayor will be quite interested in the next slide. Jane Ann Morrison was a topic of the mayor's speech because she had set the bar, established some performance standards during the last year's State of the City address, and the mayor mentioned her. And then Jane Ann was there, and she reported on it in her column two days later on Thursday. And she said, "NLV Mayor Vision Expands, Scores Big One." I like that. Scores big one for the city. So that was extremely positive. One other thing, and I'm not going to go over every single list here, but just so you know, this is enormous amount of television. know, this is enormous amount of television broadcasts. I want to thank Cox Cable for providing the equipment and the airtime, because I'm not going to read them all, but you can see Cox Channel 96 and their HD Channel 1096, those are the broadcast times that they'd offered us in addition to the production and staff they provided at Texas Station. In addition to that, KCLV, Channel 2, our friends at the City of Las Vegas, had those four broadcasts, so it's been tremendous, a tremendous broadcast in terms of television. I might also add that the State of the City is available on our city's YouTube page, and just so you think that maybe YouTube is just limited to folks that love the internet, we've had lots of traffic on our YouTube page just recently, in the past few months, we've noticed that there's been 500 different individuals that have been watching city council meetings only on our YouTube channel. This does not include all the cable offerings that Cox and the City of Las Vegas have provided, and they've watched a total, this is amazing to me, of 96 hours of city council meetings. Can anybody here match that? I don't think so. So, it's tremendous, and that's just on the internet on our YouTube channel. As you know, that's probably one of the best parts of the whole address, was $3,000 was raised for Friends of the North Las Vegas Library District. And before I play the video, one thing that I might add, and before I take your questions, I remember the mayor had come to me and said, "Mitch, did you know that Councilman Wade Wagner can sing? And he could probably sing the National Anthem." And I said, "Wade who?" And I did not know that Councilman Wagner sang actually so well, and so a lot of the comments that I heard was, "Who knew that he could sing so well?" So I think you deserve an applause for the great job that you did singing the National Anthem, and I can represent you 10%, whatever, can we arrange?
I'll do it for nine.
It was a great event. So with that, Barbara, if you'd care to roll the video, let's watch the video. Just a second. So once again, we did spend a lot of time working on this video. We were pleased the way that it came out, the council all participated in it, and thank you for your contribution to it.
Having our employees come together and settle with us on that big lawsuit that we had, I do think that was probably the biggest accomplishment we did this year, staying out of receivership, keeping the, again, keeping the city viable, balancing our budget, I think that was the biggest accomplishment here in North Las Vegas this year. We're actually the go-to college, I think, for the City of North Las Vegas, and it's a great partnership with Mayor Lee, the City Council.
Customer Service, and we've been tweaking those areas, both of those areas, for the last year, and I think the three programs I wanted to discuss tonight, I was really going to go, we're going to get our biggest bang for our buck. The first thing I want to talk about is a new customer service callback program. One of our biggest complaints that we've always received, you may not get too many along these lines, but we get a lot of them, and that is that we only had 15 lines coming into the city for customer service. When those 15 lines are busy, it takes two and a half minutes of a customer listening on the phone to various options they have before they get a voice message that says, "I'm sorry, all lines are busy, please call back." And if they do that two or three times, we have a very angry customer on our hands. So what we have done here, and we've actually implemented the program in a soft opening on January 14th, was establish a new callback program, whereas those customers will still listen to those first two and a half minutes to give them their options, because a lot of people will hang up at that point and go online or whatever else they have to do. But the final message is not, "Please call back anymore," it's, "Press 1 if you would like us to call you back." And it has been very successful so far, we've had a lot of good comments on this. We actually, over the first, we implemented it on January 14th, and over the first nine days of actual use, we had 3,350 callbacks versus 2,065 calls that were actually answered by a live person when they called. I have a chart here I'd like to show. Barb, how does this thing? Very good. The chart's kind of hard to read, but I believe Council has a copy of it. The items in green are English calls that were actually answered. You can see on January 14th, most of the calls when we first implemented this were answered by a live attendant. The dark green is calls that were answered by callbacks. Blue are Spanish calls answered, and the red is Spanish callbacks. You can see here, we really didn't implement the Spanish callbacks until January 27th, but you can also see here that, you know, the trend showing that on the 14th, we had over 400 callbacks, I'm sorry, 100, but then that jumped up on the 21st to over 500 callbacks, and on the 26th, which was a Monday, our busiest day, nearly 600 callbacks. The program basically has eliminated the frustration of not being able to get through to a customer service specialist, and our goal is just that, you know, there's no excuse for not getting a call. I will say that, you know, when you go into the callback system, like on a Monday, we've had over 100 people in that queue waiting for a callback, that our longest wait times were like one hour and 50 minutes, but the more enterprising people were at, would actually be calling, say, on their home phone, but leaving their cellphone as a callback number, or even their office line as a callback number, and they would get the callback an hour or so later and take care of business. So we're very happy and excited about that program. The second item I'd like to talk about is our new Pay Near Me program. This is a new option that we're going to be offering for our customers to pay their bill. If they want to make a cash payment, they'll be able to make that payment at any 7-Eleven store, any Family Dollar store, or any Ace Express Cash Checking Store. And the great thing about this is that this payment will hit our records, our book, within a few minutes of them actually processing it. So if we have a customer who is late on payments, he's afraid his payment, his water may be shut off, but he can't make it to City Hall, he could actually pay at a 7-Eleven, and it's just like he's paying at a cashier down here at City Hall. We're really, excuse me, we're really hoping that and anticipating that what this will also do is reduce the lines of people coming in here to City Hall to pay their bill. There's really no reason to come down here if you can pay it at other places, even 24 hours a day. And how we're going to do that is, this is our typical bill here. What we've added on the front of the bill is a notice that says you can pay your bill with cash at any 7-Eleven, and it shows a barcode. They will scan, you take your bill to a 7-Eleven, they will scan it, and that brings up the account number, and you will be able to make your payment in cash at the 7-Eleven, and boom, that enters our accounting system right away. And that could be at 2:00 in the morning if you can't sleep. On the back of the bill, we expand into what you have to do in order to pay your bill at Ace Express Checking or at the Family Dollar Stores. The difference is there you have to do a text number, and you can do it with your smartphone right there in the store, but you have to enter a text number, and they will send you a barcode or a digital code to give to the attendant, and they'll scan it right off of your smartphone. So again, this program, we expect to go live next week, and there won't be too much advertising at this point, it'll be a soft opening until everybody gets their first water bill, which takes a month in order to get all the water bills. But technically, even today, even tonight, you could go to a 7-Eleven or one of these stores, enter the code that's, you know, enter the text number that we're advertising, and enter your account number, and you'll actually get a barcode that they could scan, and it'll take it. So we're actually open for business, but we don't have the paper in place to do it yet.
Director, are we the only city doing this? Because I've not heard, are we just catching up, or are we pioneering this, or what is the status with the 7-Eleven and that?
Mayor, we will be the first to pay water bills in the valley using Pay Near Me. Pay Near Me has been around a while, and they do have other clients out of state, but nothing here in Nevada.
Will there be, after this soft opening, better signage, they'll put up on the window, hey, you can?
Yes, in fact, representatives from Pay Near Me will actually be down here in our call, in our cashier area, with pamphlets and brochures and passing them out to residents that are paying their bill, letting them know, hey, there's another option that you could use.
Thank you, Director. This is really cool, I appreciate that. Council, any other comments or questions?
Mr. DeVal, I'll tell you what, that's really impressive. I'm always struck by the efficiencies you find, and I'll tell you what, our faith in you and your team has definitely paid off. Just one last question. I hope that the Pay Near Me, they'll have some Spanish literature to put out. I didn't see too much of it on that bill yet, but I'm hoping that, you know...
Councilman, here's samples of the Pay Near Me advertisements. We haven't sent them up to our PIO for approval yet, but one of them is Spanish. So yes, sir, we will have both.
You're the man.
Thank you.
Actually, when we did our tests on paying at 7-Eleven, we got a real nice receipt that they also gave us a coupon for two doughnuts for a dollar, so there's some other advantages there, too. And one final option for paying that we're going to be implementing soon is a new outdoor kiosk, which will be a 24/7 kiosk, and that's going to be out in our visitors' parking lot. We were almost ready to cut a purchase order to purchase this when another vendor came up, and we actually felt warranted, that it warranted further investigation, so we're probably 30 to 60 days away from placing an order on this, but it'll be right outside the side entrance to City Hall, 24/7, and again, it hits our payment system right away.
And I've got to tell you, those kiosks are so nice. I've used the indoor ones, and it makes life so much easier, you don't have to stand in line, takes about three seconds to get it done. So we really are appreciative of all the various innovative ways that we're making it easier for our residents to pay.
My staff is always looking for ways.
Way to go, Director.
Thank you.
Just way to go. Dr. Lou, you've got a great staff, just letting you know, and throughout the whole city, the things you're doing are incredible.
Thank you.
Any other items you'd like to bring forth?
No, that's it.
Council items, Council, do you have anything you'd like to bring forth at this time?
I know I've been beating people over the head with art, but I just wanted to point out that, starting next week, my esteemed colleague, Ms. Gwynne Brown, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gwynne Brown, with some partners from our community, is going to be having the very first ever African-American display in honor of African-American Heritage Month, and I'm really proud, and I thank you very much. And if you love art, you're going to like this next one, we're having the next art show in April, details are forthcoming.
No, you're not. Tell them your news.
Am I missing something?
I don't know, I...
Well, I'll tell them then.
Okay.
They announced last night that our own Councilman Verone is going to be honored by the Clark County Democratic Party for all of his hard work, for being the first Hispanic Councilman in the City of North Las Vegas, and for all of his other... Councilman in the city of North Las Vegas, and for all of his other efforts, and I think it's well-deserved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any counsel, any other side? Thank you very much. This, we will now move on, pass council items to public forum. At this point in time, this time's been set aside for the public to come forth when I call your name, please. Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Dick Moyer, would you please come up?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Richard Moyer, 608 Spirit Lake Court, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89032. I represent the, I'm a representative of the Nevada Veterans Foundation. Just want to give you an update on our Fisher House project. We had a meeting today. The groundbreaking will be March 27th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. The Veterans Administration will be doing the media work, and they will also be doing the invitations. So I just want to let you be aware of that, and because of the positive impact it has in our city, anything good for North Las Vegas is good for all of us. And then I just have one question. Do we have, or do you, the city of North Las Vegas, have any plan for a veterans' treatment court?
We have no one here from judicial system, but our city attorney's here. Maybe she could help us.
Our municipal court does not have anything specific to veterans, but I know that when they actually report to either department, they can let, I believe, the marshal know if they are a veteran, but there's nothing specific for veterans. There's not a veterans' specialty court.
Maybe through the city attorney, we might discuss if there's anything going on over there and let you know. Would that be fine?
Okay, yes. Because I belong to three veterans' organizations, and we raise funds, and we give it to Las Vegas, and we give it to Henderson. I want to give some to North Las Vegas, so that's my thought.
Well noted. Would you explain to Fisher House, Joe Brown and I were on the phone this afternoon, and we were discussing this.
He wasn't at the meeting this morning. That's why he was on the phone with you.
Yeah, he was on with me. But would you explain what Fisher House is to the public that's maybe not in the room right now?
The Fisher House is a family-oriented facility. It's going to be 16 units. It's now going to be two stories, because initially it was going to be one 16 units, one level, but because of the slant of the ground, the work, they have to design it with the two-story, because it's on a smaller section of ground now that the veterans or the Fisher House engineers look at. So it'll be two stories, 16 suites, takes care of families of military, active military, and any veterans that are at the hospital, either at Pecos, the VA hospital, and also serving Nellis Air Force Base. And I know Nellis wants to have their own, but that's down the road. But that's where we're at. It's a...
So it's kind of like a Ronald McDonald's house, only it's not for kids, it's for veterans.
Don't say that, because the Fishers get real...
Oh, I'm sorry.
They don't like that. But that's exactly, it's for families of the military to be taken. They stay for free, and it's well-funded, it's going to be well-received. Like, the state, the Fisher Foundation has been so impressed with Southern Nevada's willingness and speed to get these funds, because 64 houses have been built, no one has ever done it as quickly as Nevada, and that's so, people in Southern Nevada should be thankful of that. So I just want to let you know.
And exactly where is the Fisher House going to be?
The Fisher House is going to be built right between 2:15 and the hospital. We're in the process of putting up banners, so people will see where the building site is. So March 27th will be the groundbreaking, the official groundbreaking, at 10:00 in the morning, and on the 28th, we are having a fundraising gala at the MGM conference for the Fisher House. So just be aware of that. The VA will be announcing all of this, and they're going to take care of the media and the invitations. But the gala will be open anyway, so...
Mr. Moyer, I think the important thing here is recognize is, with Mr. Brown and your organization, this has been money that's been raised in the community. I think you raised well over $3 million to build this. Is that not correct?
It's a $6 million facility, and we have basically raised our 50 percent, and probably shouldn't be allowed, but no, no community has ever raised their 50 percent. This is the first. That's, that's, what can I say? You know, we're the first.
Champion.
Probably be the only one.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Southern Nevada veterans are very lucky to have you guys.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was wonderful. Is there anybody else that'd like to approach the council, bring any items to them? Seeing then, thank you very much for being here. We'll adjourn this meeting.